Calling the meeting to order at 6:01 is this is the October 25th Neshoba School Committee meeting, regular meeting. The first order of business on the agenda is our public hearing, our school choice public hearing. So that's 6:01 and I guess the question I have is, is there anyone here that has any statements, comments they'd like to make about school choice in the district for the FY 18-19 school year? No? Okay, this is the opportunity for people to have a say and they don't. So if that's the case, then we're going to close the public hearing on school choice at 6:02 and we will be getting the superintendent's recommendation and then having a discussion about that later on in the agenda. Okay. So I'm calling the regular meeting of the school committee together at 6:03. Do we have any citizens' comments? We have a lot of guests. No? Okay. I've got a couple of updates. January 13th, Alita did us a favor and I'm wondering if you guys can look at your calendars and get back to Alita for a budget workshop on January 13th.
What time?
I don't know the time yet. Let's, I mean, we're likely looking at another-
Probably the morning, to be honest with you.
A big chunk of time.
Saturday morning.
Generally nine to 12, nine to one in that ballpark, I think.
Okay. So if you could get back to Alita, that would be terrific. Let's see, what else do we have? The calendar I've had, so I'm gonna, I'll put the, if January 13th works, on the initiatives calendar, we'll put that on there and I'm gonna move based on discussion with superintendent these, the extended day discussion for tonight, we're gonna move that to November. Okay? And then I have one more and I know we want to get to our guests in the room. Protocol discussion. So seems like every year we need to go back around to our protocol and specifically back around to any discussions that the school committee members have regarding school committee business should be done through the school committee and sanctioned by the school committee. Not one member can take information on their own that they've created on their own that hasn't been blessed by the district superintendent or shared with the school committee and share that with other entities. And the reason for that is, as we all know, it's confusing to people. It sends the message that this is where we're at, but the rest of the committee hasn't had an opportunity to look at it, to vet it. We don't know where it's at. So I'm gonna just remind everyone of a policy which is BBAA, our school committee member authority, and there's a pretty important sentence in there. "The school committee will not be bound in any way by any statement or action on the part of an individual member except when such statement or action is a result of specific instructions of the committee." So when you, any of us, take the opportunity to present information that hasn't been vetted through the school committee or with the administration, you're basically putting yourself out there. You may not represent yourselves as a school committee member. Okay? The other thing I want to share with you is we just finished approving the protocols for the 20, for this year. And I, and I'm gonna read you this one because I want to make sure that it's on record that we did talk about it so that we can reinforce that. "Members of the committee will make no independent commitments or take any independent actions that relate to the school district. When school committee members attend meetings of other committees or boards, they will speak as individuals. They may only speak for the committee when designated to represent the committee. We shall recognize that authority rests with the decision of the school committee." If you put yourself in a position where you are speaking on behalf of the district in error, we will help you correct that publicly. I want to make sure everybody understands that. We have worked very hard over the past two years to clean things up, to make sure that the school committee understands what our role is, what our role is not, and to be as transparent and open and fair with everything that we're doing. Please don't jeopardize that good work that the rest of the committee's committed to. Any comments? Kathy?
Yeah, I guess that it's just, it's this, you know, it's in our protocol, it's in the bylaws, it's, there's a policy that's attached to this. It was also part of our training with MASC, the ones we have as individuals and one of, and included in, in charting the course. And I think if there is, if there's any question in your mind or, I mean, it's better to err on the side of caution and call Lorraine and say, "This has happened," or "I was asked to do this," and I think that's part of the work we need to do together because sometimes it's not always easy. I mean, having worked in this district for many years, I know people and sometimes it's, "Hi, how you doing? How are your kids and your grandkids?" And sometimes it's "Hi" and it goes down another road and I have to just extricate myself. So if it's, if there are any questions, that's why we have a chair and everything goes with the chair. So, and if there's, you know, I don't, I, I guess I'm wondering if there's anything about this particular policy, bylaw, protocol that people are confused about, that they don't understand the boundaries of parameters. Maybe that's a discussion that we have to have and in our manual or bylaws or whatever, do we need a, for example, and some lists of things? I don't know, but I'm aware that this has happened several times and it can be problematic for us and, you know, this committee's worked very hard to build its cohesion and camaraderie and all that stuff. I hate to see us, you know, go off track because of something like this. So I don't know if there's another way to address it, to help them understand.
And we can bring MASC in again. We've brought them in several times.
I don't think we're idiots. They've been in.
No, they, no, we, no, annual module is an important thing to do. But we brought the executive director in, we brought our attorneys in, we've had a lot of discussion about this and it seems to be only in, with a particular individual that we're having the issue. So we'll address it as it comes up.
Okay.
Anything else on this? Superintendent Clutchy, yes?
So from my lens, I just, I want to put on the table too how frustrating it is for me, especially when documents have been released that I have no knowledge of, with numbers on there that I have no knowledge of. I don't know where they came from and so then I get questions or I get emails back and it just puts us in a very awkward position. The other, a couple of other random, kind of random thoughts, but I remember last year when we were talking about, you know, a finance subcommittee, for example, or personnel or policy, and the fact that it's really important that all information comes to the larger committee because we don't want to be out of sync. To Kathy's point, and you also said this Chair Moscow, we've worked so hard to try and keep everything exactly as it should be within the guardrails that we know MASC has outlined, MGL has outlined. We have got to stay within those guardrails. Otherwise it puts all of us in a very awkward position. And being at the top of that food chain, you know, it's incredibly awkward when you get a phone call or you get, or emails coming in that you have to respond to and you don't have a clue what's happened. It's the worst position to be in and especially when we work so hard otherwise. The only other thing that I would mention to, two things. First of all, the other thing I noticed on some of the emails is that I see personal emails being used again. We have been through this before and I'm, I'm going to put it on the table again for the purposes of articulating it. We need to be using our NRSD emails. We are open to public scrutiny at any point in time and we've lived this for a year and a half I've been here, we've lived this. So to, to see personal emails to me says, "Are we trying to do workarounds or are we trying to do end runs?" Like what? It doesn't send a good message. The last thing I would say is, again, I believe that we have worked so diligently and I know I'm gonna use the term again, but I use this term with our administrators too, of keeping it clean. We have worked overtime to keep it clean and when something like this happens, it's beyond frustrating because you know that a large group of people have done what they need to do appropriately. So I agree with Kathy. Let's not find ourselves going down a road we shouldn't be going down. We know better. To your point Chair Moscow, how many times have we had MASC in here and our lawyers? Keep it clean. So, thank you.
Sure, no problem. All right. The last thing on this is, we're here to serve our communities. That's what we're doing. That's, we're not here to serve our individual needs. Each one of us, whether we want it or not, is in this position to serve the community and not serving the community by going out on your own. It's confusing for people. They don't understand it and then when we get together and our budget comes out is, well, you told us it was this, you told us it was that. So, and you know, think about the other people in your town who are reps from your town because they don't have the same information that you're proliferating. So I'm gonna continue to bring this up each time it happens. I'm gonna make sure that we are all in sync. If you have any issues and you have a particular situation you want to discuss, you've always known you can contact me and I'll help you through it. Neil, you have some?
I was just gonna say, I mean, everybody that sits at this table except for Brooke is a, is a volunteer. You know, they've accepted their responsibilities that come with the job. They work hard, they put countless hours and so many more hours than people realize going to doing what needs to be done here. And over the last couple of years, even more than typical. If, we're, we're not all gonna agree, we're all not gonna come from the same backgrounds and so forth and that's what makes us rich, that's what gives us the, I think, the depth that we have here and that's a good thing. But when we don't work as a committee or a subcommittee together and we generate information that has not been vetted through either of those committees and they're put out to the public, it jeopardizes everything and it wastes the time of every individual that has sat in this seat or sat over there or there for these countless hours doing all that. One individual can wipe that out, wipe the credibility of all the work that we've done and that's very frustrating.
All right. Thank you. Okay, minutes. Where are the sub, how are the subcommittee minutes? Are you, are you, personnel?
Up to date.
Up to date. Policy?
Up to date.
Budget warrant?
Do we have, Mark?
Click or behind one of you?
Well, we still need to get finalized reports in there too that we've been requesting. We've approved some of the minutes. I believe they're listed as drafts still.
Okay, so, so the, we're not gonna find ourselves in the position we were in during the budget season when there were several, several, several finance subcommittee minutes that were not posted. Let's bring this back up every meeting too and you can give us updates on when, so how many meeting minutes are outstanding? Two?
We have drafts listed since the beginning of the year.
And when will you approve those for final?
They've been approved.
Oh, all right.
They need to be posted by the secretary.
You don't have them? No.
Are you taking?
Me and Secretary.
Are you taking the minutes?
Yes.
Do you have the finals?
I have the finals. I can send them, I can send those finals tonight.
Please do. All right. Okay, thank you. All right, good. Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Would you like to share what's going on?
I would. Make it lighten the mood a little bit.
No, there's no need to lighten the mood. It's all good.
Sounds good.
You gotta do it in public. It's always fun.
Okay, so I'll start off with the athletics report. The fall seas, the fall season, the regular season ends this weekend and postseason begins next week. So our field hockey, football, girls soccer and volleyball teams all qualify for playoffs and we will find out our playoff seeds next week. The golf team ended with, the season with an eight, five and two overall record. They placed third at the league championship and seventh at the Division One Central Mass championship this week.
You didn't memorize it?
No.
Okay.
The boys and girls cross-country teams finished up their regular season and will be competing at the league championship this Saturday at Hollis Hills Farm. The volleyball team improved fourteen and five and will finish their regular season schedule tomorrow when they travel to Shepherd Hill. And the boys soccer team beat Shepherd Hill yesterday and has two regular season games left. The girls soccer team has secured the league title and improved to thirteen, one and two. The field hockey team is undefeated this year with a record of fourteen oh and two and we captured our league title this week and will finish up our regular season games next week. Football team is undefeated with a seven oh record. They secured a first place playoff spot with a win over Wachusett last week and they will travel to Shrewsbury on Friday to end the regular season. Ms. Rich will find out about the seating placement on Sunday at the seating meeting. Lastly, the middle school cross-country teams will be competing in the NRSD championship meet tomorrow at the high school. All three middle school teams come to the high school and race each other. The winning school takes home the traveling cross-country trophy and earns bragging rights. From the music and theater department, the fall concert kicks off this Friday with the high school band concert at 7:00 PM. It will feature the high school's two jazz bands and the concert band. Tickets are available at the door for $5. Sunday, October 29th is the first concert of the year for the 106-member Neshoba Symphony Band. The band is made up of Neshoba students, faculty and community members from around the area. The concert begins at 3:00 PM and is Halloween themed this year. And next Friday, November 3rd, the fall choir concert is at 7:00 PM in the NRHS auditorium. There will be five choirs performing and tickets are $5. Lastly, I bring a little more interesting news from the EMT program. Neshoba EMS will be holding a free screening of High School 911 in the auditorium at NRHS on Saturday, the 4th at 5:00 PM. So I'll pass these around. The film was produced by a former teenage EMT which chronicles a year in the life of the only ambulance service in Darien, Connecticut, which similar to Bolton is a high school-run service. The Neshoba EMS program is facing a possible end as state OEMS has decided not to reapprove the waiver allowing the program. So this is definitely a big event for the community, get people to understand.
I'm gonna stop you right there. I want to just level set and you're an angel, but that isn't actually correct. So I know that there's some, there's movement that's been happening, so. And you wouldn't have known that, so not your issue, but-
Because I'm in the EMT program and that's what they told us and they told me-
Yep, and, and we have, we have, we have been working very closely with our town and our state representative and things are moving forward.
Right.
And that's where I think we should leave it right now.
Excellent.
But I don't want you to worry. I'm not saying everything's cool, but I don't want you, it's moving in the right directions.
Thanks.
The right people are involved.
Glad to hear it.
Okay, so, sorry to interrupt you, but-
No problem.
Did I throw you off?
No, that was it. That's it.
Oh!
Don't worry about it.
Oh, this High School 911, and I mean, I, I signed up to go and I can't go because I have an anniversary dinner that I forgot about.
You're a bureau?
Yes! So there's clearly a problem with my priorities. However, this is a really cool thing because the Neshoba program is, but this program is even like, the kids drive the ambulance.
Yeah, we don't do that.
We don't do that. But if you can go, it's a really amazing program. Last night there was a simulation. Were you at the simulation?
Yes, I was.
Why didn't you say hi?
I, I don't know.
Okay. Well, there was a simulation and I went for a little bit and it was like-
I might've been a patient, actually. That might've been one of the-
If you ever want to be proud, you gotta check it out. It was pretty impressive. There were some situations that like I thought, I know, a lot of adults that would be passed out on the floor and it was pretty, pretty impressive. So if you can go, please do try to go. Okay. Thank you very much. I think we're now gonna turn it over to Superintendent Clutchy finally.
Yeah, I'm gonna introduce our Mary Rollins team who's here tonight. We are so proud to see all of you here tonight. Special thank you to the parents for bringing them. We really, really appreciate that. So feel free to come on up and we're gonna have Principal O'Shea kinda tee it up and give us a bit of an overview of what you're gonna talk about.
Just gonna really turn this over to Mr. Rossley who has been our coordinator of the program for, for years. This is one of those, there's the special activities and events at every school that make, you know, it's a part of the culture and part of the school and nature's classroom is one of those foundational traditions at Mary Rollinson School. Thirty-eight years, right? No, you didn't go? Okay. It's at, it's at the point where, where parents are coming back saying, "I remember when I went and I can't wait for my child to go." So it is really a unique and special opportunity and Mr. Rossley organizes it every year and, and does a fantastic job and he's brought four students, so I'll turn it over to him.
Is what we are, if we head up to the screen?
Absolutely. You'd like you to.
Yeah, well, thanks for having us and thanks for letting us share what we think is a really great, one of the really great things about MRE. As Mr. O'Shea mentioned, we've been doing this for about 28 years. I've been running this for maybe the last 10. And what we're so proud about this program is it increases the community we have within our school community. These fifth graders really, really learn and grow together. We get to know each other better. We learn each other outside of the classroom. We get to hang out on a personal level and just get to know each other a lot better and that is a wonderful foundation for the school year. So I'm gonna introduce Ellen, Nate, Anna and Ella and they are each gonna speak about a particular slide and they're always welcome to tag @DMe if they forget to say something. So without me talking anymore, here's our first slide which will be explained by Ella.
This is a bus ride to nature's classroom. And everyone's like really pumped and watching movie and the, everyone's like happy because like, yes, we're going to nature's classrooms. Only, let's say we've been waiting for our whole lives, people.
Fine. You were very-
But the downside is leaving our parents for five days, four nights.
There were some tears. There were, we won't, we won't, we won't deny it. There were some tears.
My parents.
Hello, what's that, Anna?
This was the luggage line and showing how like we were starting our community and showing how good we can work together.
Ella?
This was the activity we did right after we got off the bus and we got into groups to, we were categorizing. So, um, see how like people are to get to know the nature's classroom teachers.
Excellent. Getting to know you game. Ella?
So this is entertainment and we do it after every nature's classroom meal and it's really fun because you get to like get up, stand up. And right now is the first lunch entertainment and where we're doing a song called "I Love Life" and so repeat after me a song and it's so much fun. And everybody was singing it the whole week.
It was a great way to start our week. Those principal aux you see up there in the tie dye and bandana, that was our principal for the week and in addition to Mr. O'Shea who was there. And he started us off with a chant and call and response, "I love life" and it was a wonderful way to start our week. Anna?
This was a night activity, a team building exercise and this was with Star Child, one of the teachers. And we did like alphabetize our bodies kinda and see how far we could get into it, do working out together.
Yeah, so using each other's bodies, they had to create the alphabet and see how far they could go. Wonderful team building experience. Nate?
In this activity, we were passing a cup around without our, without our hands and we had to get around in a circle and back to our group.
And were you successful?
Yes.
Absolutely. There's inaction.
This was the helium hoop. We had to use one finger to bring it down to the ground and it's, and we got it to the ground for the entire time.
How many kids were in that group of eight or two? No, probably about 12 and they had to lower the hula hoop without using any words, correct? You couldn't talk to each other?
No.
You couldn't talk, okay?
No, you couldn't. You could take your finger off the hoop.
Okay. Next one is Ella.
So this is the example of a field group and they are going to the beach. The three options we could go to were, no, four, where the forest, the beach, the burnable and the marsh. And right now, um, they found a moon sail, which was actually pretty cool. Unfortunately though, I was not in that group.
Sorry, didn't catch you there. Anna?
Um, this was during transition time when we called tea time and it was in between each activity or field group. This was me and my friends hanging out by the trees.
For so many years I thought tea time was-
Tree.
Tea time. I didn't understand that. There's no tea involved. Ella?
This was categorizing and we got jelly beans and we put them in piles and after we got to-
This had to do, I think, with categorizing animals and, yeah, animals and species, right? And of course you have to use jelly beans. Nate?
Um, this is what makes us happy.
What does make you happy? Well, this is the class, what makes you happy.
Okay. We're basically saying, saying what we thought made us happy and we put them into two groups, one that did make us happy and one that didn't make us happy.
What was the purpose of this class?
By the way, made each other happy.
Maybe power of, power of positive thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Excellent. Ella?
This is, this is a video of one of the experiments we did at the thing called the science fair.
It's not gonna be a video. It was a video and now it's a still picture. So explain what was gonna happen, Ella.
So she put in, so we call her Suzie C and we put in a burning cotton ball and an egg on top of the milk carton, put the burning cotton ball in the milk carton and the egg slowly just dripped down and in the video my friend Cam said, "I knew that was gonna happen" and I screamed.
Because it was startling, it was startling.
It was extremely, it makes a huge popping sound when the egg gets tucked in. Anna? Oh, Alita, we have technical difficulties. What would a presentation be without technical difficulties? I had a feeling you might get stuck on this video first. It opened you a window, we could just skip past the next two.
Because cartoons usually-
Okay. Just like my classroom. Technical difficulties. Just like my classroom.
You should be on that.
How do I play a press this? Oh, it should be on to advance? Yes, okay, excellent. Thank you. Thank you. That's fine if it doesn't play. Anna?
This was also during the science fair and it was flower power and our teacher Gil, she was teaching us that flowers are flammable but not when it's compacted together. The flower dust is flammable, so she blew it into a blowtorch and it made a big fire.
So be careful when you're baking. Isn't that nice to explain? That's why there were so many bakery fires in England because the, the flower dust, once it's exposed to oxygen, it's very, very flammable. Be careful. Ella?
This was Mr. Man and he thought Cam, he was nothing in it and then he heated it up, he rapidly put it into ice cold water and it kind of like shrunk and like-
Imploated?
Imploated.
Yes, that. Yeah, little bit of implosion there, yes. And Nate?
Um, this is like a glue block and how you make it, you just put cornstarch and water and if you put your hand in slowly, it's a liquid, but if you punch it really fast, then it's a solid.
So it was kinda weird, the same thing with solid and liquid. Anna?
Um, this was during Wacky Wednesday and me, my friend Gracie and Stella, we were the only three that dressed up and that was off, that's all this room would be taking a picture of us.
We've developed an incredible connection between Lieutenant Moody in our town. He has been coming with us for three years now, out of the goodness of his heart and he originally came with his kid, but he's loved the program so much, he's continued to come back and loves the bomb he's building with the kids from Lancaster. And just, it's a, it's a wonderful relationship we've built with him. Ella? Uh, Ella, sorry.
So this is making game catchers and we are having a lot of fun. All the catches, we're getting our knots, our fingers in the knots, but it also helps with cooperation and teamwork because there's not a lot of string to go around and we're like, okay, you can have that and here's my leftovers, you can have that. It's fun.
Ella? No, Ella. I figured this would be on purpose.
Feature face and-
Feature what?
Feature face.
Feature face.
So we got books and we put honey and olive oil in that we put on our face plus like moisturizer and make it soft.
Ah, there's an inexpensive moisturizer for all of you.
And we learned about those skin cells.
Learning about your skin cells. Excellent. Anna?
Um, this was still feature face, one of the interest classes and we learned that honey's very good for your skin.
Ella?
This is dissect-
This is dissecting a sea star.
No, there's no graphic pictures, don't worry.
Don't worry. And we learned a lot about sea stars. And they're actually, it's incorrect to call them sea, um.
Starfish.
Starfish, because they are not fish, they are actually echinoderms.
I learn something new every year at nature's classroom. Nate?
Um.
My hand in the picture. That's it.
This was before we eat dinner. And we're basically on our floor, playing the guitar.
That's it, that's a little brief shot of our dormitory hallway. Ellen?
This was after breakfast, I think. And the waitron, a waitron is a waitress or a waiter. And they would just leave the plates and the forks.
Excellent. Anna?
This was me as the waitron. And we were in line for getting the dishes, like putting the dishes in the water for the teachers.
It's fantastic, kids serve me all week and take my plates away. It's wonderful. Ella?
This is the whale watch bridge. We loved the whale watch bridge. So it's cooperation. Because everybody's trying to get the whale watch bridge just to stay still, just like that. And it's like, "Do you go over here?" Like, okay, and then, "No, you go over here."
Giant teeter totter. And do you remember how many seconds we held it like that?
Nineteen, yes.
Nineteen was our record. It's very challenging, actually, the kids were really well working on it. Nate?
It's Thursday Night Live. And in this picture, the Principal Ox and another counselor were singing a very weird song.
Thursday Night Live is a night of skits, where the kids in their field groups come up with skits. A really interesting and really great education moment for me is that nature's classroom teacher was an MRE student. And it's very, very sweet, she's gone to college and she's come back and she's teaching in nature's classroom. She was a great little trumbler there. Ellen?
This was the discovery board. And if we found something cool at the beach, the marsh, or the.
Forest, birdball.
Oh, yeah, the forest. And we could write it down on the discovery board so other people could see what we found.
These are hanging up at MRE if anybody wants to come by. Ella?
Okay, this was the ORP report. And it was how much waste food was left over. And the lowest pounds, the least pounds that we got were two and a half pounds.
Two and a half pounds of leftover food for 70 kids. Which really opened their eyes to how much food they actually just waste off their plate at the end of a meal. Real great activity to do. And last, Ella?
So ILAC stands for, well, most commonly known for standing for I am lovable and capable. And Principal Ox invited us to just see the good in people and to think about what good friends we have in life. Because that's an important thing. And I went up there, my roommate sent me too many things that I forgot. Thanks, girls.
And sometimes, we're doing this for several years. These posters are sometimes sparsely written on. But I gotta say, this year, all three, discovery, ORP report, and ILAC boys were absolutely just covered with things. The kids were so actively involved in that. And our last slide will be introduced by me.
We are leaving in this picture.
Yeah. He doesn't have anything more to say. We're leaving.
Nice job.
And there was sadness. So there were tears when they left Mary Romenson. And there's tears five days later when we leave nature's classroom. That's the bond they built with these teachers in five short days. And we just want to thank everybody, parents and the community for their support of this awesome program. And thanks for having us.
Good job.
Did they have a cookie?
They can absolutely help themselves cook cookies here, absolutely.
What's it for us?
Okay, so before, before they're done, first of all, nature's classroom is just an amazing, amazing program. And I know that Principal O'Shea was there as well with you all this year. Because he and I were connecting on a couple of items throughout the course of the time. And it sounds like, if everything serves me right, you had fantastic weather as well.
It was almost too hot.
Yes, yes.
It was so strange. You know, we go to the last weekend, September, every year. And it was in, it was almost near 90.
What a great time, though. And to the parents tonight, thank you so much for bringing your students. You know, we sit here, I mean, you can't help but feel, I have goosebumps. You can't help but feel such pride. You can't help but feel such pride in your children. And students, you did a fantastic job tonight. So professional, so poised, so knowledgeable. It was just fantastic. Thank you so much for coming in, Principal O'Shea. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for having us.
That was good. We need a little bit of that every day. Okay, we're going to move on with the superintendent's report.
Oh, thank you. So just a couple of really quick things tonight to bring forward. I know that we're going to talk about my goals here this evening as well. But it just happened that I wanted to do a quick update with regards to ELLDSL. Of course, that's English Language Learners, and English is a second language. And I had alluded to the fact, I think at the end of June and into the summer, that we were going to take a fresh look at it this year. We made some really kind of radical changes in terms of realigning our staff. We tried to get our staff off of 117 so that it can be the classroom more than the traveling and all that kind of thing. Patty O'Connor, I don't know if I mentioned this to you before, but Patty O'Connor is actually leading this charge this year. That's very different than past years. She's doing a fantastic job. And somebody else I want to just put a nod out to is Harold Becker. Harold Becker, actually, has assumed the role of helping to oversee at high school. And this is brand new to him. And, you know, we were just talking today about how proud we are of the work that he's doing right now with this particular program. So we've got staff aligned, we've put some different structures in place. We've certainly offered a number of different types of PD opportunities that haven't been available before, so we're proud of that. And the staff is attending all the appropriate training. And Harold Becker, actually, and both, he and Patty are taking some additional courses right now to train and upgrade their own personal skill set. So very excited about that and just so grateful to everybody who works so hard in this area. Early literacy continues to evolve as well. Again, Patty O'Connor is helping to oversee that initiative. We've got consultants in, they started to work with our team last year. They are continuing on. It's basically looking at like a five-year rollouts, this is kind of year two. This year, one or two of the key things are that the new benchmark assessment is now in place and they're doing some work with that. They've also set up a Google site that, where all of the information is being housed for everybody so that there's consistency across the district. The consultants continue to lead our PD, but then they also work with teachers outside of that PD. So it's a nice continuum for our staff as they continue to work with early literacy. Residency workshop, you know that we are working hard to put some nice guardrails in with regards to residency and who's coming into our school district. Brian Cody and I will be attending a workshop on this upcoming Friday. It's a legal workshop that's being orchestrated by Aspen Valley Collaborative. And so he and I will be attending that. And it's being given by the lawyers. So it'll give us a great opportunity to kind of look beyond the templates that we're looking at creating, kind of beyond the guardrails, and look at it from a level, a lens of statute and regulations. So I just wanted to let you know that that's happening on Friday. The final thing that I've got here is the NRHS Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that's involved with that particular committee. The committee continues to work, you know, ongoing with regularly scheduled meetings. I think lots of rich discussion is occurring. Not sure where it's going to land at this point in time, but that's a good thing. I guess, that we don't really know. Appreciate the school committee members that are involved with that as well. So thank you to everyone that continues to sit on that group. And to our community members, and of course, our all volunteers as well as our school committee members. So we'll look forward to seeing whatever it is that they bring forward. And of course, boss fans, we want to thank him for leading that group. And so that's it in a nutshell for me.
Questions for Superintendent Clenchey. Let Neil.
Are we going to revisit the whole residency?
As a discussion topic?
Issue as a discussion topic?
Yes.
For the district?
Yeah. Yes, because we're going to, what we're doing right now is preparing a packet that we will come forward and share with the school committee as we go back. So we're not there yet. We're close, though. I would say December, January, we should be able to come forward with something.
I'm sure you will, but could we, in that packet, is it possible to make sure that we have like, I guess, the fiscal ramifications of that angle? I'm sure that's where you're coming from too on that. But just like, how are we being affected at this point in time? I mean, I just think it's relevant.
What are you asking? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Residency, so we have, or have identified, you know, people that aren't necessarily.
Who shouldn't be in the district.
Shouldn't be in the district, that are in the districts, that we as individuals and taxpayers are paying for them to come here. And they're sort of circumventing even the fact that there's no school choice to be here. And I'm curious as to what sort of financial impact that has to the school district. And what we're doing to rectify that.
That, now, just to be clear, that has not been our focus. Our focus, I'm not saying that we can't bring something to the table on that, but our focus has really been, how do we, how do we put clear guidance and guardrails in place that, I don't want to say are ironclad, but are much cleaner than we've got right now. And that's really, has been our focus, rather than looking at it through the lens of monetary. I'm not saying that that doesn't have merit to look at.
I appreciate that. No, I do, I appreciate that angle. But we're going to have a discussion about school choice later this evening. And a lot of that is fiscally driven as far as the decisions that are made. And I think it's egregious isn't begin to cover it when you're talking about somebody who's here in the district bypassing all of those things. We're not even getting $5,000 to that student and they're costing us. And I just think if it's one or two, great. But if it's greater, I think we talked earlier about tipping points and other things. So how much is this costing the district? Because times are tight.
And I think, you know, along those lines, I have to say thank you to this administration.
Absolutely.
For turning their attention to it. Because I don't know that we've ever had a discussion about residency.
Right.
So, you know, thank you.
Yes, definitely. And that's not, I'm not critical with anything you're doing at all.
No, and that wasn't my point either, Neil. It's just, yeah, I mean, I guess for round numbers, you could use the per pupil cost, right? For round numbers?
Whatever that is.
Well, we know what it was in 2015.
Right.
So anyway, I'll leave that to you.
Thank you.
But that's, thanks, Neil. And thank you for that. All right, moving on. Our interim business and operations, you know what? It's our business manager, Pat. Can you please come up? And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Clenchey.
Great, thank you. So we've said that we're going to come back and once a month, they kind of give a bit of an overview. And we're going to consistently provide you a bit of an update to say, okay, here's where we are with regards to moving forward and the work that's being done behind the scenes right now with regards to the 19 budget year. And we want to talk about, okay, kind of here's where we are right now with the 18 budget year. Are there any key drivers? Is there anything that's standing out that's looking like it might be an issue for us? Are there any, are there some things that we might have missed along the way? And, you know, so we're kind of giving that overarching, kind of the 50,000-foot view and saying, this is kind of where we're at. So Pat, I'm going to turn it over to you. And if you miss anything and I can catch it, I'll make sure that I just jump in.
Sure. So I have before you the results of operation for the month of September. There aren't many changes as, you know, compared to the last report that I gave. We still don't have our contract ratified for the teachers. Then I'll be able to give you a little bit more accurate numbers in each one of these areas. So this is what I have here. Does anybody have any questions about any area in particular?
Maybe just highlight the health services in the facilities department and why those numbers are whatever they are over there.
Sure, the health services area, as you can see, it looks like there is a projected surplus in that area. And I can tell you what that is, is we, at this point in time, September, we had not placed anybody in that position. I believe that's changed now.
Yes, maybe Anne Marie is right here. So perhaps Anne Marie can give the school committee a quick update on the health position at our nurse leader.
Are you doing a jig right now?
She's ready to have her nurse's cap off.
Until Brooklyn, when someone comes to my door on Halloween dressed like a nurse, they kind of, you know, Charlie Brown, they're going to rock. Very pleased to be passing the torch to our new nurse leader, whose name is Lisa Brolke-Gobeki. She's starting on November 6th. She comes to us from Lowell, Lawrence area. She was a public health nurse. She was a teacher. She taught in a vocational school. She taught health assisting, so she knows that angle of it. And she's got, she's wonderful, very likable, very personable. And she's got a very special interest and special expertise in emergency management. She actually spent two weeks at Ground Zero after 9/11, working, you know, working there. And she's got, you know, spent multiple seminars and things like that, that sort of thing. It's really fascinating to hear her talk about that. So we're very excited to have her joining us on November 6th.
Thank you. And then, don't leave us, Anne Marie, if you don't mind, please. But perhaps, Pat, to speak to the, speak to the facilities component as well.
And the facilities component is because, as you know, we're still in, searching for a new facilities director. And since Jeff Converse left us, so I wanted to make that apparent right there that that's basically what we're looking at for that.
And maybe Anne Marie, can you just update us on that as well, please?
I can't, we received, I think it was 12 or 15 applications. We interviewed five people and the person didn't present him or herself. So we're going back out again to see if we can find someone who's worthy of our attention.
So that, that press ad just went out this week?
Just went out yesterday, the day before, yes.
So that's kind of where we're sitting right now. So as much as Anne Marie has had her nurse's cap on, I believe, Pat, what did they give to you the other day?
They gave me a hard hat.
Yes. Special thanks, Anne Marie and Pat, to you folks for kind of moving in here and these gaps for us right now, taking the lead. I know, Pat, you met with the head custodian state, for example, and such. So I think you and Pam are doing a really nice job. And I think two people like Rob Freeswick that are making the move in, Jim Brigham, to make sure that there's no holes at this point in time. So it's been a great team effort, I think, just as it was, Anne Marie, during your time. Although, we didn't have anybody else to send off to all the different nurse leader things except for you. So we thank you for all those various sessions that you attended on our behalf, so thank you. Thanks, Pat, go ahead.
And can segue, if anybody, does anybody have any questions on this question? Or can segue into the budget for 2019? I just want you to know that, again, I'm meeting weekly with the facilities people. And we're working diligently on our capital plans. So we want to make sure that we have some rock solid estimates in place when we go to communities, when we look at our needs at the high school. And again, as we talked about before, we move forward as if we're going to be in that building for the next 10 years or whatever. And then if anything changes, we'll adjust that. And one thing that I would like to let you know is I do have something in my hands for onsite engineering about the cost of relocating the leaching field. And again, I want to reach out to DEP about this to see if I can maybe get an extension for my September deadline of having this installed. And, you know, if we're going with an SLI, then maybe they will give me an extension so that we maybe make an altogether different plan on where this leaching field is going to go. But again, I will include this cost in my capital.
Can you share with us, are you comfortable sharing with us what the cost is? The estimated cost for the leach field?
We have two options, actually. And the first option, there are ranges.
Okay.
The first option runs between 75,000 and 125,000. And this proposed change would make operations and maintenance for this water treatment plant increase from 40,000 to 50,000 dollars a year. That's one proposal. The other estimated cost range is between 85,000 to 175,000. And. And, but I'm sure that it's probably closer to the 85,000. This, the second one does not include any additional costs for monitoring or testing. So that would, to me, that looks like the better solution, if that's what we have to do. But again, we're going to have to do this in steps. We'll budget for it if we have to. And then if I can get an extension, if we have an SLI in place, then.
So maybe, so one second, so Neil and Lynn and Susan, if you guys can take down that number to share with the facility advisory, I'd let that number come from the school committee, that would, that would be good for your folks. Neil.
One of the things that Jeff was going to be looking into, that, just make sure it's on your sticker file, is if we have to put that in prior to anything being done, if there is a decision that there's a new building that's going in there, rather than a refurbish or just leaving it the same, whatever. But my concern is that we spend all this money and then have a new building down the line. I think Jeff was going to look into seeing if we could tap into that particular system regard, in other words, can we locate it so that we could tap into it if it was a new building or if it's going to be the existing building, just so we're not doing a redundancy here.
Right, and we actually have had that same discussion, to be honest with you. So it's very absolutely on our radar.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Lynn?
Would you happen to know, would you happen to know the estimate you had, does that include the dismantling of the existing system?
No, actually, I believe this particular estimate is creating a new leaching field, not dismantling what is there.
So we just leave it there?
Yeah.
Oh, really? I don't know enough about it.
I don't know enough about it.
It just doesn't sound right.
I know. You need to take it back.
Joan, stop it. I'm sorry. I don't know, we're at the beginning steps. I just wanted a number. I don't think we need to go too crazy.
Because, I mean, things could be dramatically different if we are building it.
Yeah. Mark, you had a question?
You mentioned possible change in operating costs. Is that increased by $10,000, is that the difference or increase?
No, I said by 40 to 50,000 per year.
And what's the current operating cost right now?
That I don't know, but I can look that up and get that information for you.
That's great.
And I think you and I talked too, I mean, we're talking, when we're talking about the next year's budget, I know that you've been meeting regularly with the principals. We've started some good discussion with our different units. The capital plan, like you said today, that's your number one goal right now is to wrap that up.
Right, and that's like, we've had our long meetings weekly with the facilities staff, the custodians, because they're working in the buildings, they know what needs to be done in each of the buildings and I'm relying on their eyes anyway. And then I bring, I can bring people in together, so that's.
Any questions on any of this?
And in terms of relocation, what is the general hypothetical thought towards comparing a new field as in where? Is there been an estimate on some of the ideas or is it just saying hypothetically, if there were a new field, it would cost X?
Probably in one of the athletic fields.
No, that's the reality. We only have so much land there and right now, that's, that's one of the things, so.
That's why we really have to look at that and decide what we want to do.
Yeah.
We might be, you know, way, cost. So when you, when you did that, if the guesses, they're going into an athletic field, it means you have to rebuild the athletic field. So there's another cost added to it. It's not just.
Right, and the cost of that would be returning it to what it was before, because the leaching field would be underneath.
So it, just kidding.
It's part of the cost.
Yeah, so when we look at cost, we want to be able to.
You want to roll that figure?
Yeah. Yeah. I agree. Okay. All right, well, thank you for that and appreciate you sharing that information. I think we're going to move on if, unless somebody has anything else to add. Thanks, Pat. School choice.
School choice. So, you know, I've done a lot of thinking about this and I know that tonight you're looking for me to make recommendations. So I just want to speak about a couple of, a couple of thoughts that I have and answer. Let me feel free to ask questions or if I miss something. At the end of the day, right now, we sit with approximately 88 students in our school district still from school choice. Of the 88 students, we've got 61 right now that are in the high schools. So we still have kind of the high school group that's moving through and then the 22 plus students still looking to feed in. When you take a look across the district, we, one of the things I've noticed about both last year and this year is even though we have a solid base, we still have a fair amount of transience in and out of people that come to live in our communities. And so when I'm speaking with the principals, we're always talking about the fact that, you know, we, I want to say it was Lancaster, I think we had like 13 students move into like one kind of division this summer. So those are things that we always need to think about. As I look to school choice, and I'm certainly open to whatever discussion you want to hold on this this evening, I'm not so sure that I'm ready to make a recommendation that we return to having school choice in the Shova Regional School District right now. I'm very comfortable with maintaining our status quo right now of suggesting that we do not reopen this for school choice in at this moment in time. But I'm certainly open to any discussion or any thoughts you have. So in essence, I feel that I would like to see the number of 88 students start to whittle down a little bit. I think we always need to keep in mind the number of kids that come in and out of our district. We always need that wiggle room. And some of our classes are just close to that tipping point, but not quite. But if you have three or four kids move in, I don't know that we want to add school choice into that mix right now. So, and if we do ever look back to doing it, I think we want to be thoughtful and strategic, which is exactly what I said last year with however we approach this. So my recommendation this evening is that you stay status quo for another year and withdraw, and not have school choice as an option for Nishova Regional Schools.
Okay, Neil?
I applaud that. And the reason being because historically, for the people that are new to the school committee, Bolton ended up with 100 plus students in their schools while the other schools town wise didn't have anywhere proportionally set up. And we're talking tipping points. Well, we found out when we were doing a lot of follow the money trail and so forth, that there were in fact tipping points that happened all over the place there. And that has cost the district overall. And until we have something that's thoughtful, that's considerate and the proper guidelines in place to keep something from ever happening again. And I don't think it should just be up to the sole discretion of the superintendent, no offense, but we need to have the very strict guidelines as to how we would, you know, taper this out and where we would start and so forth to avoid those issues you're talking about. And we don't have anything like that. So I just see us getting on the hamster wheel again if we just jump at it.
Anyone else? Mark?
In my view, the high school is overpassing by about 100 students, so I am very capable of keeping school choice closed for a number of years until we get our demographics sorted out and our buildings sorted out. I think we need to develop policy, a checklist policy for various key areas that we know we run out of resources. Like for example, we have our music room in the high school that is too small. We have four sessions happening in our cafeteria because cafeteria is too small. We have a study area that is not really adequate in the high school and that's just in high school alone, let alone lower levels. If we were to develop a policy that took a look at key areas that we know we're a little short and that we should examine those each year, we take a look at this decision so that we know how are we doing in these various key areas? We know we are running out of resources for population. And that's not only in the high school, but also district wide.
Anyone else have any comment? Susan? I'd love to hear what you think.
Oh, I'm in favor of keeping it status quo.
Withdrawn. Because, so the way the vote works, if we, if we don't vote, then we're automatically in school choice. We're off, we automatically adopt. So we have to, if, so I need someone to make a motion. Kathy's going to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
I move that we withdraw from school choice for the 2018-2019 school year.
Okay.
Second.
Do a second, Mark. Any questions, comments, all is in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, thank you for the recommendation.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, we have superintendents. You know, I'm wondering if it's okay if we move, we've got a couple of guests, we can, can I just drag them up here?
Yeah, drag them up.
Thank you, thank you Kathy, I appreciate that. So next up is food services update and then the wonderful and talented Joan.
Good evening, I'd like to thank Superintendent Clancy, Chairman Laosco and the entire board for allowing me this opportunity again to come and visit and discuss my favorite subject, school nutrition. I even get to blunder. This one?
No.
Before he starts, I think we owe him a vote of thanks for providing the refreshments at the TRITOM meeting.
Oh, they were so well received, good ones.
Thank you, thank you. You know, the staff, that's one of the times where they get to really show their talents. So we were happy to share those with you and they were able to have some fun with it as well. So thank you for allowing us to do that.
Really, Steve, would you not agree, the presentation was fantastic that night?
It was wonderful.
And again, it was one of those nights that how could you not be so proud in the Shova Regional School District that night?
I still think there's a business opportunity there, but.
I do.
We're working on some catering menus.
Didn't you bring treats for tonight?
Well, we only brought some cookies.
You did?
But yes, so please help yourself. No, 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 there's some M&M's and some chocolate chip cookies in the back. So help yourself if anybody would like a quick sweep.
I'll let those folks know first.
As I said, I could talk to you about this forever, but I'm going to keep it brief.
But you can't.
And show you, just with our new software, some of the reports that we're able to run, it's kind of small, but you can actually see their daily revenue reports, total income reports. And this particular report that I'm sharing now, well, that's actually the total income report for the two months. You know, you can see the first few days, breakfast obviously very slow and then lunch, again, slow, as they typically are in our first two days of school. Everybody has their new lunch boxes and has things that they want to, to bring. But for instance, this is our August meal report and we can see that our grand total for breakfast and lunch was $3,100 plus for that day. These are really, I just, I'm showing you these just so you can see the information that we actually can pull from this new software to not only.
Yeah, actually, if I can just clarify and Tom on that, and I think Lynn, this really gets back to, I remember you asking the question, so what type of things does the, does Mosaic do? And so when Tom and I talked and Pat and I talked about tonight, we're not going to go through a lot of detail on this, but we wanted to give some snapshots. Tom, would that be fair to say?
That's exactly what I was trying to say, so thank you for saying it so eloquently. And not only does it show us what we're doing, but it picks up on any errors that may have occurred, so we can fix those immediately. So if Mary accidentally entered a $10 check as 10 cents, we can see that and take care of it immediately.
Immediately, like that day.
It'd be cool, we get a call from the parents saying, I just got a negative notice.
Right, right. These are just some numbers with à la carte reports for the month of August. There we go, in September. Oh, let me go back to that. And that also shows the parents what exactly their child's buying it for à la carte. So it may be a bagel, a cereal bar, a breakfast sandwich, ice cream, beef jerky. All the snacks that we offer are all on the John Stocker A-list. They meet all the nutritional standards, not only for the federal guidelines, but the Massachusetts state guidelines, which are even more stringent. And a parent can literally go on their My School Bucks account and say, oh, that's where Johnny's, Johnny's money went. It's that simple. That's all schools. And then we run our daily summary reports and we're also able to balance these with the reports, the deposit reports that are done daily by the managers and sent to us each day with the receipt for the cash and/or checks from the people who are not actually using the My School Bucks function. At this point, we're over 80% of the people, of the money we receive is coming in through My School Bucks. Oh, da-da, balance on our report. And just some of the things we're doing, these are some of the changes we've made at the Luther Burbank Middle School. We took all that big, heavy stainless steel, top mounted sneeze guards and things like that out and we've put portable sneeze guards, we've put a slide where students are able to get hamburgers, hot dogs, hot sandwiches of the day with some fries, all the fresh garden salads, the main entree, the fun lunches as we call them. And then we also have our fresh garden bar where they can help themselves to fresh salads, carrot sticks, pasta salads, tuna salads, whatever the mix of the day may be to follow the components needed for the vegetables and subgroups and things like that. Our next move is we'll be bringing that to the Hale, a similar, similar setup at Hale. Hale is in a little more, they need a little more work because they're actually, there's only a couple of the wells in their serving area actually make heat now. So we're getting some prices on that to replace that whole unit. And then we'll mimic the slide and the grab and go type meals. Now every one of those, every one of those salads or fun lunch meals, when they grab that, they don't need to take anything else. That's a meal, boom, reimbursable meal, reimbursable meal, reimbursable meal. And then the other things like the fresh fruit and things like that are all bonus items with that. We find when they choose themselves, they eat. So it's very exciting. And then we are working on our new website. We have an appointment with Cindy Larson to make sure that we're all ADA compliant with all the new laws. And as soon as that's all ready to go, we will put that up and that will be just another exciting adventure in the school nutrition department.
I'm really glad to see your second bullet, too. Easier for parents to navigate, to view and pay balances, because I don't know if you do, but I hear about that a lot.
Positive or negative?
That there, there, there were some concerns at the beginning of the school year, but I don't know if it's because people were just getting used to something new, I don't know what it was, but.
Well, what we're including is actually the, actually the icons where they can just click and boof, be right there. And the current website doesn't really have that, that ability, but it's going to be much more interactive and much easier to navigate with regard to online payments, menus, and then soon we'll be getting nutritional information up there. It's very exciting, the things that are happening here at the Shova.
You know, I was talking to some of your lunch folks at Luther Burbank who are just beyond thrilled with this and the kids are just receiving it so well. So hats off to you. And I know that a number of us now are also paying through school. Yes, and we're all sitting in the room saying, yeah, we are all doing this and taking advantage of that as well. So staff as well is taking advantage of it. Your salads are to die for, they are absolutely delicious. The other day I had one that had like tomatoes and mozzarella cheese and, oh my gosh, it was so good. And corn and what a, what a salad. And who, who had the chicken, was that you Anne Marie today that had the chicken and the rice and the orange chicken?
Yep.
Said it was just absolutely delicious. So hats off to everybody. I mean, you're doing a great job. I would also like to say, I'm so thrilled, going back to the Mosaic, to see what we can do now comparatively speaking to a year and a half ago.
So am I.
There's just no comparison.
So thankful.
Big difference you're going to have.
Oh, my goodness. It's unbelievable. And we're learning more and more each day of what this program can do. And the customizations that they do for us are not costing us any extra money. So. extra money. So we're able to adapt reports that specifically.
Meet our needs.
That meet our needs.
So I have a comment, but I wanna hold mine and let others. Does anybody have any? Oh, Lord, let's let Kathy go and then.
I have two questions if that's okay.
Of course.
Okay. Now, I wanna know what a chortle in an Izzy is.
Okay, Izzy.
Chortle?
Is a hundred percent whole grain Graham. They're little, almost like mini cookies.
Yes.
And they're 51% grain-rich, and they're actually very delicious. They come in a pack, in a hundred calorie pack, and it's one of the students' favorite little snack options. And an Izzy is actually a hundred percent fruit juice, but the water they use to make it is carbonated. So again, it has the sugar and the other components it needs to be on the John Stocker A-list. John Stock is the nutrition team from Framingham State University, my alma mater, go Rams. And they work very closely with the Department of Education and the School Nutrition Association to ensure our new products, any new product has to go through the John Stocker Institute to make it to the A-list before we sell them.
That's great, and the variety is wonderful. I'm sure the kids appreciate that. Then the other.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
On the balance summary report, can you explain the negative balances for the student totals and the non-student totals?
Yes, that would be a negative balance for our student population, and then a negative balance total for our staff.
But why? What's the cause of it?
Because then our payment doesn't.
Really? Yeah, that's still, now, how did, I know that that has been an ongoing issue.
I'm good.
I'll let you deal with the adults. But with the kids and their families, I know that was a huge issue a year ago that we had some concerns about. How has that changed?
The good news is it is getting better.
Great.
That number actually, we're working with, we recently, the grace period has ended for our students receiving benefits who haven't either turned in an application or appeared on the direct certification list. We have about 40 families right now who have lost benefits. So, they've all been notified twice already, and we continue to reach out to them and say, what can we do to help you to get these benefits back to you? Because not only are they losing benefits, but we're using benefits. So it may seem a little higher than it was, say, at the end of September, but that's that, we're two weeks into this grace period, and we continue to work on that.
That's good.
But we have the.
The key to remember too, sorry, Tom, thank you, the key to remember is that number is always shifting, as you know.
Yeah, it's a live number.
It's a live number, so although it might show this today, by tomorrow morning, it may be 2,000 down.
Exactly.
It's a live number.
A big problem, like a year and a half, two years ago.
Yes.
But Tom has put a system in place to really attack and address it and to really take on these more close.
And very strategic and structured process, I would point that out too.
And we just discovered yet another new benefit to the mosaic system where the cashier, if a student doesn't have enough funds for a meal, can literally hit a button and an email goes right home immediately.
That's awesome. That's great. Good, thank you.
So progress, it's fantastic.
Neil?
So, mine was kind of related to Kathy's, because we have had, we had huge debacle with the whole outstanding lunch thing and so forth. No bearing on you, just the way the policy, the way the policy was, the way things were done in the past. And part of my excitement about mosaic was the ability to address delinquent accounts and make sure that by the year end, and I understand this is fluid, to make sure by year end that we're sitting well. How did things end up, like you started it, right, and so that you finished up, you finished up the year last year, so do you see that this has actually helped alleviate that problem?
Yes. Compared to the year before, it was less than half, the negative balance at the end of, at June 30th was approximately $3,000, as opposed to closer to 10 the year before.
Which still brings me to what do we do with the 3,000 that's out there as far as the, do we, do we have a policy that needs to be put in place? Do you have, do you have the ability to do what needs to be done to make sure that if there is 3,000 that it's people in need that couldn't get identified for whatever reason, rather than people that are just skirting the system?
So I can answer that, or any one of us can answer that actually, but we, I believe, Pat, you've found a draft policy that you've put forward.
We've looked at many.
Yeah, and actually some draft, from many communities, and what the state requires and what the federal requirements are, I gave those to you, so that you would have that information to develop your own policy.
Yeah, because MASC still does not have their own policy.
Really?
Yes.
Really?
But it's required.
Because it's a USDA-funded program. And.
So my message is simply that, yes, you're right, and yes, we've got something in the works on this with regards to policy. The other.
Oh, sorry, you're asking something a little different, not how to go about collecting the fees, but how to collect the kids who maybe could benefit from a free and reduce.
Nope.
No, I don't think so.
I'm looking for the fees. I'm saying there may be people that, for whatever reason, they may be in need, but they may have, they may be caught in the red tape of things right now.
Residency.
No one's looking, exactly, no one's looking to punish those people.
Right.
But, exactly. You write a check for your kids, we all write checks for our kids, whatever, and we wanna make sure that your next-door neighbor who's driving a very fancy car isn't not writing checks, do you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, no, no.
And that's the whole, that's the whole point.
I think we have a keen eye to that right now, to be honest with you, because we've had lots of discussion on that behind the scenes, so I think we're in a good place on that.
I can give you one quick example of how fluid this is. On the 15th of May in 2016, there was $11,000. But on the 30th of June, there was 3,600. So that is really how fluid it is, and I don't know if that has something to do with the fact that seniors are graduating, they pay their obligations.
Some parents choose to pay at the end, no matter how many emails they get.
Right, and that's really where it only matters, is where it is at the end of each year. I mean, it doesn't matter how fluid it is through the year, it's just what do we have to make sure it doesn't disappear?
I think the only point that they're trying to make, and correct me if I'm wrong, is just saying, this is a snapshot in time.
Yes.
Sure, absolutely. The only other question I have, I'm sorry, is, and I apologize for the length of that, does this help you reduce food waste? Because if, I'm looking at this and I'm like, ah, you do 50 cookies this day, you do 75 cookies this day, and it's consistent, so I know Wednesdays I need to make 10 extra cookies.
Yes, we've also purchased the back-of-the-house module. We're working collaboratively with several other districts to share information so we all don't have to do the same thing over and over. No sense in recreating the wheel. What we're doing is we're sharing the information into our mosaic systems, so we, in the near future, will be able to run all of our production records, all of our nutritional analysis, and all of our back-of-the-house operations through this software.
And then you're able to plan the production based on?
Right. Right now, we do have a production plan system, but it's nowhere near as good as this will be once it's in action. And, one more quick plug, they've also just acquired another system, or another company rather, that has digital display boards, which I love to see in our cafeterias, that can flash this information once it's in there, all the nutrient analysis, and then eventually print the nutritional labels to be able to go on each and every one of those salad containers, just like a pan or your grocery store, except we charge $3, not $8.75.
Lynn had a question.
Actually, I was just wondering, because you forgot food waste in major school, and I don't know, I mean, I would love to see, I'm not trying to do any work.
Here we go.
I have an answer for that too.
So you can actually track the waste?
Well, here's, we're in January, first semester, first, beginning of the second college semester, we'll have an intern coming in, and that's gonna be one of our projects.
Could the students be involved?
Absolutely. No, it's totally gonna be involved with students. And we're going to literally, well, I don't wanna let the cat out of the bag, because we have a new principal at the high school, and he doesn't know about it yet, but.
His boss is here, so make your cover.
Literally, with bins and, well, it'll be bins inside, but then we'll take the waste outside and measure it in tarts and weigh it, and then we'll be able to share. We may not get to every school, but we at least want to try the high school, being the biggest school, and to see what our actual plate waste is, and that's gonna be one of her projects.
So is that a whole semester?
She'll be with us till third, she'll be with us for two, oh, no.
Two semesters?
Not two semesters, it's almost the entire semester, yeah. It, she has to do her reports and things at the end.
Okay, so she's working in a project?
Yeah, yeah, this is, she's in school to be a registered dietitian, and this is her hands-on practical where she needs to work, in a cafeteria, develop recipes, study plate waste, and things of that such.
All right.
One thing I'd like to ask.
More question.
Email me anytime, tuhul@mrsd.net.
I just want you to know that we're up for a comprehensive.
Yes, our administrative review.
Yep.
That time again.
Well, it's gonna be interesting to see how we do this time versus where you were last year. I have a question, then we're gonna move on. So when a student graduates out of the high school and there's a balance, does that balance automatically get sent to the parent's home?
Yes. And we also sit there at cap and gown day, so they can't pick up their cap and gown if they have not paid all of their balance.
No, I'm talking the reverse, because I have a child that's got over $100 in his account.
We are working.
That's all I know what happens to that money.
We are actually actively working on that. We haven't hit every student yet. We haven't done all the returns yet, but we're picking on the list. Unfortunately, sometimes the lists get put over here.
But what I mean is, does a parent, and this isn't me, this is just in general, does a parent have to send?
It helps, because that alerts us quicker, but we can run a non-active student report to see who has positive balances, which we have done, and we are going by the list, and then they get an email that says, would you like a refund, would you like to transfer it to another student, or would you like to donate it to a student in need, which helps some of those students that we know cannot afford.
Which is a nice idea, but I bet there's a ton of people you don't hear back from. It's just kinda like, I want that out, right? Don't you want that out?
To me, that would be the advantage of having like credit cards put through the mosaic, because you can just.
Yeah.
Back to the.
Reload them.
There are a lot of people using that system.
Yeah, over 80%.
All right. So, Tom, big difference in what you're sharing, but the, your energy about your area, so we're really thankful.
I am too. It's amazing what can be done with a little support, and I have great support with Superintendent Clancy and Pat, and it made the world a difference to me as well. So I would like to thank them for their support, as well as all of you, because now we are doing some really great things, and it's hard not to be excited about it.
Good for you, you just keep that chicken salad coming. So, I had one that was different, and I was disappointed, and I figured it was a blip. It must have been, they must have been busy, they had to go out to the grocery store.
Somebody may have been out that day.
Oh, all right, okay. Whoever she is, she's amazing, because I remember you told me it was somebody in Lancaster.
Yeah, she, maybe we didn't have cranberries, but I do know we did, we did have some coming in eventually.
Really? Wanted to buy that from you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, you did a great job. Thank you so much, very warm of you.
And poor Joan, the great and wonderful Joan, that's gonna give us a special education update.
Hi.
Hi, Joan.
Wow, thanks for inviting me.
Yeah.
No, I mean it, like a lot of really good, exciting things going on in the district, so I appreciate the support from the committee and the superintendent. I'm gonna talk a little bit about comprehensive special ed programming alignment and focus, and the reason for that is I spent a lot of time last year really doing program evaluations throughout the district, and looking at where are our special ed programs, do we have like continuity throughout from elementary to middle school and high school. So you all know that I came last year and said, after working with the principals, we really need two brand-new elementary programs, which are up and running. We have eight students between both programs and a few more on deck, that, you know, we're waiting for the recommendations to come from teams, or the recommendations are made, and we're waiting for parents to accept the placement. So, we have a brand-new program called Class Connections at Center School, and that's servicing students either on the autism spectrum or students with neurological disabilities. We hired a fantastic teacher, things are going very well there. I actually got a report today that not only have the staff embrace the program, but so have the students. So we're really welcoming the students in those programs, and really, even in inclusion opportunities, kind of wanting to be on their teams and really supporting them and accepting, you know, we all have differences and challenges, and we all have strengths, and I think that's so positive, so I'm really excited about that. Early risers, the social-emotional program, has come to Bolton. That program is full, so that has been a very busy program. Six, we have a special ed teacher, a school adjustment counselor, and two parists that are working in those programs with those students. Things are going well, but it's very busy between Emerson and Florence Sawyer. We're running past through that path quite a bit to support students, but things really going well. The staff have really made nice relationships with the students, and we're really benefiting from that emotional support that we provide to students, but also giving the rigor of the academic classroom experience as well. So I can't thank you enough for supporting both of those programs, because they have been embraced in both towns unbelievably, and they were really programs that we needed in the district. And then, you know, we have our programs that have been very well-established in Lancaster, so now when I look at each of the towns, you know, Lancaster is servicing our students at MRE and Luther Burbank with our intellectual disabilities. Bolton is servicing our students, early risers and rise for our social-emotional students, and then still is servicing our students with autism and neurological disabilities. So we really have now select and focus of how we're delivering services to students, and then we think about transition, right? So we're always thinking about preschool to elementary to middle, so we wanna keep continuity of services in place for students, so we're not moving them all over the district, because I think sometimes we do move our most needed students the most, and that always worries me. So like, when I came here, I wanted to make sure we really funneled and made sure that if a student needed to go to a middle school program, they didn't have to leave their peers and their connections. So that has really gone well. So, you have any questions about the program?
No, we just wanna hear more.
Oh, you wanna hear more? Okay, I'll do, I can, you know what, I can just keep going.
You're a great way to hope, because, one second, because honestly, the programs was what we were all craving in special education. And I remember when we learned that Joan was gonna be accepting the position, and Superintendent said, she's really big on building programs, it was like, oh, thank God. So, thank you for that work.
Yeah, I'm really excited about it, and I think we've just looked at things through a programmatic model, so less of using our power professionals to be one-on-one with the students. When I think about things programmatically, I say, how do we support students but allow them to gain independence? And I think that we had power professionals supporting maybe one student versus doing it through a really thoughtful programmatic model, and now we really see the difference of that. So kids are having more experience in inclusion on their own with peers and having rich academic experiences while also getting support from the teachers and the support staff. So I think that's really important, because we should be continuing to grow independence over time with students, because when they get to the high school, we have to then think, what's in line for them post-high school? So that's always on my mind. Some of the work that's being done in terms of professional development that's coming up this Friday is really looking and having the teachers look at all the skills all the way through, so that we're knowing that we're always building on skills to get kids. way through so that we're knowing that we're always building on skills to get kids ready for middle school or getting those students ready for high school. And then when we get to ninth grade, we're thinking about building transition. So I really like to focus things so it's very thoughtful and people really understand it well. So I hope I represented that well, described it well.
So just, I just want to kind of go back because I think, Joan, I don't want it lost because you're saying it quickly, which I know that you don't, no, no, that's okay because I know we're short on time. I understand that. But this is, two things are a real shift for us and so I just want to highlight those two things. First of all, the academic piece, when I think back to our discussions last year, we really wanted, use the term tonight, a much richer academic environment. And so I would want the school committee to know that, that that has been very purposeful. And we sit here now saying we're very proud of what we've accomplished, you know, and more particularly you and your team have accomplished, but that's the first shift. The second shift is the notion of creating a greater sense of independence with our students. That has been a huge paradigm shift in our district and that has not necessarily come easily from a staff perspective. And I just want to again acknowledge, I mean, the countless meetings, I know you, Emery, Pat and a series of others and our principals had over and over and over again, very thoughtfully and very strategically do a realignment with that philosophy in mind. So I just, I want to commend you on those two areas, the academic, the rich academic component and the realignment that I certainly believe was so badly needed. So hats off to you and your team for all your good work in those two areas.
Thanks. Can't do it without support, is how I think. I really appreciate the support. When I think about, let's see, new programs, looking forward, okay. So we've done a lot of, and I want to bring my transitions, my eighteen to twenty-two program, I would like them at some point to come to the school committee. We have one person out on maternity leave, but we did a redesign of that program last year. There is a new program brochure, there is a new rubric and there's a new philosophy of the way we're working with those students. So that is something I have been super, super passionate about. I kind of picked one goal at every level to work at last year and our transitions program, we're really thinking about growing independence for our adult learners. So there are post-high school students who are really working on, you know, vocational life skills and leisure activities. So what we've done is we've been out, and I'm sure you saw the article out in the Stone who's Independent Newspaper that really talked about where we're looking to build vocational sites for our students to give them more work experiences. And last year, as we were building the programs, we started to talk about, we have a couple of students that really, we're not sure if staff need to go with them anymore. And so I said, well, let's make sure it's okay to drop them off and check in with the supervisor, with the, you know, our legal team. And we had permission from the parents. We actually had two students out working at work sites independently last year. And so isn't that what we want is for them to have these post-employment experiences? So we have, we've identified potentially five new sites that we'd like to bring on board in terms of working, allowing us students to work in the community to give them more rich employment experiences. On top of that, we have really thought more about like, what do adults do for leisure time? Because after we're out of school, there aren't all these planned periods that we have during the day like we have in a high school schedule. So I was welcome to come over to the Bolton Senior Center two weeks ago to meet with them and we're going to be working on some intergenerational potential after-leisure activities. They actually invited our transitions, some of our transition students to their magic show and their luncheon. So we're going to start really working with our students and building relationships with our seniors and doing some leisure activities. So we're really trying to expand that as well because there were things that we do well at the high school in terms of unified sports and best buddies, but when we're adults, you know, we go to the gym. So, you know, we go bowling, we, you know, go to art class or music class. So we really want to start expanding those things. So when our adult learners turn twenty-two, they know what their interests are and they can seek them out. So we're really looking to build around that. We built a very specific rubric from that group of things to work on with students so parents are clear about what the rubrics are, how it matches with our vocational sites and what we're doing to grow independence for those learners. So that was a year-long project. We have a brand new brochure and I would love to have the team kind of come and talk with you all about the work they've done because it's really exciting. So we're continuing to grow. So the other thing when I think about the transitions program for our eighteen, twenty-two year old students, it's at the high school. So Brooke and I have had lots of conversations in the last few months of, I would love to find a space in the community. Our students actually graduate from the high school and we bring them back to the high school. And so when I think about it, I say, what if we had a community space? Because we want to make it feel and look like, you know, a work environment, a vocational site. And if we had more space, there were more training opportunities that we could have in a separate space from the high school. And the other thing that lends to me thinking about that is our life skills program, our nine to twelve life skills program will grow tremendously. We have six students coming to the high school from junior life skills next year. So we'll have a class of twelve. They are in two classrooms right now, which is not enough space. So I would, if I could find a space for transitions, I could take over some space to give some more life skills and vocational opportunities in the high school for our life skills program. So I'm on the hunt for space and if you have ideas, I'm open to that and Brooke and I keep talking about this because we think that, you know.
In the community outside of the district, is that what you're calling?
In the community outside of the high school. I mean, just outside of the high, outside of the high school. We've tossed around several ideas, not that we've landed anywhere because we haven't, but I said, you know, it would make sense if we bring it up tonight to say, we're having this discussion, you know, we have nothing to bring to you tonight, but just, I think, Joan, your point was really valid, you know, these kids leave and supposedly are done, but then we bring them right back into the high school again and we're not sure what that message is.
Right, it's a great point. Does this program operate out of our budget the same way or is this something totally different, like Title I or something? I don't know all this stuff.
No, it's out of the special ed budget. So it's part of our budget.
So whatever building we get, it's all school budget, school, there's no other grant that it comes, I don't know how this works.
So for students who may not acquire a diploma and meet the standards, we offer services, post-grad services because special ed, you have a right to earn services till the time you're twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
So the students till the twenty-two.
Yes.
You know, another way of looking at this, you know, we're saying, is that a good fit for our kids who are twenty-one and twenty-two in the high school with, you know, fourteen and fifteen-year-olds? Should they be separate? Should, and if our thinking is that we're really wanting to try to encourage independence, maybe we need to have a fresh look at this. And so again, we're not bringing anything to you tonight other than our thinking that's off.
I'm sorry.
So two quick things. First of all, I, last year, it was brought to my attention just how valuable the transitions program is to families that have children, adults that are now leaving the school system and going in. And the school system, it was brought to my attention, is really one of the only venues that don't want to just toss medication or these other things at people. They want to teach life skills and how to cope. That's not offered out there in pretty much, it's very difficult for families to find. So I appreciate that, there's huge value. If we did something and moved off campus, the costs seem like they could start to spiral. So I'm wondering, are you looking at maybe being a destination district for other people going through a transition program where you can help fund something like that so that it's not a budget buster for us down the line?
I think that we keep that, and you probably could respond better than I can, but I would say that we keep that in the back of our mind at all times, to be honest with you, with regards to some of this. So I would absolutely agree that, is that something for us to consider? Yes. And have we considered it? Yes.
Thank you.
Awesome. Questions?
I have a very quick one. Because I love this program and I love, every time I hear about it, I'm like, oh, I'm hearing about this. Have you looked, are there other districts that have done something similar where they've
moved into an off-campus space like you're looking at and what sort of models have they used?
A lot of times it's available space in a town building, so I guess I would start there because some of the town buildings have space already available. So then we partner, you know, I've partnered with other communities where they've used other town space. So I, you know, that would be my desire, not to go private space because, you know, rental of that would just be, you know, enormous. But sometimes there is town space available that's been offered to some districts.
Any other questions for Joan?
Oh, what's the population of the postgraduate?
Right now, we have eleven students in the program.
I love when you come here. It's great to hear about the work that you're doing. I don't say we're going to shell a ton of money, I'm just saying we love when you come here. All right, thank you.
So I just want to, I just want to wrap up and just talk about, so I don't want there to be any surprises. So that's one thing I'm thinking about. The other thing is I have up there is program creation. So I just want you to be aware that Hale Middle School does not have a program right now. Center School has a new program. We will have students that will move to Hale Middle School and we want to start thinking about how are we building a bridge so that we make sure that we have services for Hale. So I don't want you to be surprised if I'm coming to talk about that in terms of budget pieces. I have preschool on there because I have spent probably nine months on really evaluating our preschools, about what we need, where are our programs and what do we need to provide for special education preschool students. So I know I'm on deck for November twenty-ninth to come and talk about recommendations for preschool going forward. And the only other thing I have is we've had some really good professional development additions that have been going on. So we have had teachers go through what in Gillingham Training, six teachers who are trained and certified so we can really provide multi-sensory reading for our most challenged readers in the district. So that's been a really nice addition to have that certified training in place. We did an initiative at the middle school level to bring co-taught math to the middle schools. So if you looked at our MCAF scores, there was a really big gap between our special needs population and our regular ed students. So we looked at that gap and we said, we have to really start looking at the research. So research says kids benefit from more of a co-taught model where we have a math expert and a special ed expert working together. So we had professional developers come in all of last year and work Luther Burbank, piloted in six, seven and eight, the co-taught model. If the teachers were here, they would tell you every student benefited by being in that co-taught model because they're getting grade-level math content and they're providing academic support where there might be gaps. Quickly behind them were Florence, Ryan Hale, what I was only asking one team to kind of add and do the co-taught model. Two teams at both, in both schools agreed that they would add to the pilot this year. So we have more co-teaching professional development going on. So in year three, we would like all the middle school teams to be in a co-taught model. And so you're probably thinking, what are you doing about elementary school? So that's coming as well. I'm waiting, the two seventy-four grant has not come out, but I'd like to use some of that funding through the two seventy-four grant to work on some of the co-taught model, especially around the mathematics to begin with at the elementary level as well.
I have two quick comments. If I can. So Joan, thank you for everything. Thank you for all that you do for us. I think two quick comments and you alluded to pre-K and I wasn't sure if you were going to go there or not. The teaser though would be the notion that you, that I had alluded to earlier, building bridges and the notion that we are thinking long-term across the district and a nice continuum. And I think that when you come back in with the pre-K, I think that our school committee will see exactly how we're looking at that. So thank you for all your work on this. The only other thing that I wanted to add tonight too was Joan is our Director of Coupure and Personnel Services. Now, tonight she's here talking about SED specifically, but I would tell you, district-wide, Joan is an incredibly valuable resource for us. She tackles situations that are not SED, that none of us has the skill set or the knowledge or the knowledge of the statutes that are in place that you do. And you're able to find resources for children that fall through cracks with other situations. And you do, you do an amazing job and I've seen that in the last year and a half. So I know that you're here tonight talking about SED, but I have to commend you for the work that you do. Be on SED for those children that find themselves and families that find themselves in other crisis and you're the woman that picks that up. So thank you for that.
The question, math transition, the math model that you're doing right now, is that going to help the foundation classes that we had to put in at high school freshman?
You know, to be honest with you, you would like to think that it would, to be honest with you, because I think that there, this Luther Burbank would say, I think, they're not here tonight, but I think that they would say that what the work that they did last year was incredibly invaluable. And so I think that they would suggest that we can probably expect to see an uptick in that area.
So more math foundations or less?
No, so I'm saying more students coming in, better prepared.
Better prepared.
That's what I wanted to get.
Right. So we're trying to shrink that gap at the middle school by exposing them to grade-level concepts and then thinking about how we're scaffolding and spiraling curriculum to kind of reinforce those areas of gap.
No, that's good. And the last one is, when you were talking about the class, you probably answered, I just didn't catch it.
That's okay.
Especially for kids with IPs and everything, what's always bothered me is that they get taken out of the class a lot. Did you say that they're keeping it all in the classroom now and then not being taken out of the classroom?
So now the model is that the special ed teacher and the math teacher are teaching during the math time together. So they're not getting taken out of the class.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, and then the other piece of that that you need to know is there's academic support time built in in all the buildings. So if we need to provide more support around the math, everybody's doing something during that academic plus time support. That also lends our special educators to have more opportunity without taking kids out of academic during that plus time at a building to provide that reinforcement.
Do we have improved results yet on these tests? I know that, have we started bridging the gap?
So, I would not, I would say it's early.
I was just going to say, I think we're too early to go there right now. It's really just anecdotal right now.
Martina Kenyon and I have worked very closely on this project together and, you know, we are going to really look at the data analysis. I mean, we only started it at Burbank last year with a very small pilot. We're looking to expand. As we grow over time and really look at this meaningful co-taught model and the research will tell you, this is the best way to provide instruction for our students. So that's why we went in that direction.
Oh, you're good to come back again. I always ask when you're coming back again because you're going to tell us more.
Oh, yeah, I could tell you a lot more.
I know, I would love to devote.
You told me eight minutes.
Actually, to be fair, I would like to devote like a whole chunk of time because I don't understand as much as I want to about special education and I want to be able to appreciate the work that's being done in order to do that.
It's really great work.
So I may be dragging you back in if that's okay.
Of course.
And I promise we'll get you up earlier in the agenda.
It's fine, it's fine.
Thank you so much for everything you're doing and for coming in.
Well, thanks for having me. Thank you for all the questions.
All righty then, Superintendent Golds, Kathy finally, thanks for letting us know.
Finally, finally it's my turn. We're going to be looking at three documents that are in the materials packet. The first one that I would like everyone to look at is the superintendent's evaluation process for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And this is something those of you who have been on the committee for the last couple of years will recognize. But for those of you who are new to this process, this is a summary of a huge Department of Education document about the superintendent's evaluation process. But this is basically a quick primer of what we need to do. And most of the starting steps have been charged to the Personnel Subcommittee for the last two years. So there's a So there's a five-step cycle of continuous improvement. And this is the same as the evaluation system for other administrators and for teachers. And that was deliberate and it's designed because the standards, the process are in alignment. So the first step in the process is the superintendent's self-assessment. And Brooke presented us with her self-assessment at our PSC meeting in September. And she basically went through the superintendent's rubric and identified areas that she wants to work on. And then, working with the committee, she submitted professional practice and student learning goals, which you'll see in a minute. And then the superintendent can draft between one and four district improvement goals, and Brooke has developed one. And so that is what we're presenting to you tonight. Tonight is also the review that the superintendent will, no, I'm sorry. Okay, no, a little confused. I'm okay now. So another part of the process is that we look at other areas of the rubric that the superintendent's goals should address. And you can see them on that second page. The focus of the rubric review is on the elements within each indicator, et cetera. And the third bullet down identifies the additional standards that we will be focusing on. Because if you, when you look at the superintendent's rubric, just like the teacher's rubric and administrator's rubric, there's a lot there. And while we are going to evaluate Brooke on every standard, we're not going to do them on all the elements and indicators. So we're going to be focused. So the plan is going to be presented tonight. And then the, at mid-year, is it February or January? Brooke will do a mid-cycle review, which is an oral presentation. And then in April or May, she will do the final evaluation. When we do the final, prior to doing the final evaluation, we'll have a workshop with MASCE. And Dorothy, Dorothy, did one with us last year, just to help get us started. And so I think that was helpful. And then we write the evaluation, we send them in to Lorraine. She compiles it and does the final evaluation. So if you haven't had a chance at some point, you should look over these. And then the next item I want you to take a peek at is the superintendent's rubric. And there is, again, for people who haven't done it, it's good to read the guide to the rubric and how do you use it, and then the rubric at a glance. And then you can read specifically about the standards, the indicators, and the elements. So this is what the evaluation is based on. So the last thing to look at is the draft of the superintendent's annual plan, which she has, which Brooke worked on with the Personnel Subcommittee, two or three drafts of it. And this is what is coming forward to you to discuss. The PSC voted unanimously to recommend it to the school committee for approval. And one last thing I want to point out, in, next to each column that lists a goal, there's another column that says standards. And what Brooke has done with her goals is to help us organize our thinking toward the end by telling us which standard applies, so we don't have to figure it out. And if you notice when Brooke presents her superintendent's reports each month, after each item, it references a standard. So when we get to the point where we write the evaluation, we'll just go back and look at the, well, Brooke will submit her document to us about attainment of goals. And then we'll go through any of the documents and the superintendent's reports to see other things that have been done. So it sounds like a lot. I'm telling you, don't worry about it tonight. We'll worry about it in April. But everything is there for you, and it's just getting used to doing it. The first time was more arduous, I think, for those of us for whom this is the third time, it might be a little easier. But there'll be a lot of support to get it done. So Brooke, would you speak to your, your plan?
Sure. So the document that we should be looking at right now basically says the draft of a superintendent's annual plan. And the three goals, I'm just going to go over them very, very quickly. So you heard me allude again to the ESL ELL tonight. And because that, that's one of the areas that, and you've heard Joan also tonight say, we're trying to narrow the gaps. We're trying to narrow the gaps, you know? And, and this is one of the areas that we felt as a district, the principals and myself, was still a large gap. And so this is very, very specific to a very specific program. We made some dramatic shifts. Not a one of them do I feel uncomfortable with or that it was too much of a shift. They were shifts that needed to happen. So tonight I sit here and I'm feeling generally very pleased with where this is, this particular program is going. So if you take a look at the key activities with timelines, the instructional practices, review and such, we did a lot of work on this, at this area, particularly throughout the months of May, June, July, leading up to the new school year. And talked with a lot of people about how to refine the practices and what this all needed to look like. And so we're just finally at that stage now where we can kind of articulate that. Timelines with appropriate activities, Patty O'Connor's in the midst of just pulling all of that together. We have established regular, ongoing ESL ELL meetings with all of our staff. And they do, there's a nice dynamic and I think our staff would tell you a nice level of predictability now with that. And so we're very pleased with where that's heading. And of course, we'll continue to monitor ongoing instructional delivery and student family support throughout the course of the year. We've talked about staff realignment. We've done that across the district in several areas, but this is, this was also one of those focus areas for us. Professional opportunity developments, we're capitalizing wherever we can on that. We've already done that to this point in time. We'll continue to do that throughout the year. We talked about the staff meetings with minutes, with appropriate agendas, with a good sense of structure on that. And then, of course, the instructional delivery that's discussed and reviewed quite regularly by our principals. So that, that's the piece of the ELL. Over the page, this really still dovetails back into some of the work that we started last year with regards to the five-step educator evaluation process, but specific with regards to administrators. Last year, you'll recall that I spent a little bit of time, a fair amount of time, with the assistant principals. This year, the shift is moving now to the principals. And I think that we felt last year, in fact, I remember even saying it in the meetings, we need to kind of get our house in order first. And that's what we felt we really needed to do with the assistant principals. This year, we felt we could move and just talk about us. And so that cycle has now started, as I had alluded to in my superintendent's report last meeting, about the number of meetings that are ongoing in this area. You can read everything here, so I don't need to go over the key activities, I don't think. The timelines, we have established a new template for goal setting. We've got a draft of that going out, although I've talked to all the principals about that. Meeting evidence will be ongoing and professional development is also ongoing. You'll recall last year, we spent a fair amount of time looking at professional development across the district. That continues this year. However, I would be, I would be remiss if I did not say, but we do have a particular focus this year at the high school. So I just wanted to put that out there. The last goal basically is looking at assessing, evaluating, and reconsidering some of the communication flow, if you will, between our principals' offices and out into the communities. And so we're looking at doing something a bit different. We're looking at, I, you used the word the other night, Chairman Moscow boat audit. I don't think that I'm quite going to that length, but I'm kind of going between, across between a survey and an audit. So not quite to an audit, but more than a survey. So that's where we're heading. I've got an absolute vision of what that could, should look like, and I'm excited about where that's going to land. At the end of all of that, what we're really looking for is to establish a district-wide protocol and agreed-upon set of practices and principles that will help to guide our principals in this area. In a nutshell, that's it.
Any questions for Brooke? I can't believe how this process has gone this year.
Big change.
Big change. And the, and the goals are just so targeted to what we need to do.
Well, I think that they're really addressing needs that we have in this area too. And it's nice to stay focused and it does keep us in line to say, okay, where are we going again? Where are we going again? So it's very helpful for us.
Wonderful. So are you looking for a vote?
I am.
I have a question for Personnel, for Personnel Subcommittee, actually. Thank you. I like what you, first of all, this is, this is stuff that put a cheese grater on my brain. So thank you for doing what you guys do on Personnel. But one of the goals, did we establish goals earlier? And how does this tie in?
Our overarching goals?
Right, but part of, part of the district goals, because one of the things I thought came up was technology was going to be one of the goals this year. And I don't see that in there. And I'm, so there's a disconnect in my mind, and I'm just connected.
These are, these are, it's, these are based on Brooke's self-assessment for her own professional growth, her student performance goals.
Sure.
And then the last one was actually based on some feedback she got in her evaluation last year. Not everything goes into this document.
Right.
And as Brooke reports out through the superintendent's reports, things like technology will come up. She'll assign it to a standard. And I'm not, I mean, I don't know, it might be curriculum. So say it's standard two, okay? And now we're writing the evaluation. We get to standard two, and I'm like, all right. You go to the superintendent's reports and you look for the technology thing, anything that says standard two, and you can comment on it there. So this doesn't limit us, but this focuses the work that Brooke is looking at for her professional growth. Just as when teachers write their goals or administrators write their goals, their, their personal goals. But that doesn't mean they're not accountable for everything else in the rubric that goes on. Does that help?
No, totally. I just wanted that bridge so mentally.
Yes, no, no, it's there. This doesn't limit us. And the, the reports that she provides us. And, and, you know, I recall last year, the work in, just in terms of the budget and the budget book, that came through with her final evaluation. But that was a goal. So we can go back and look at that. But yeah, it's, we can cover it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are we good? Any other questions? Can someone make a motion, please?
Make, make a motion.
Good man. To accept.
To accept what it is we need to accept. So moved.
Thank you, Alita.
Yes.
Well, you got to say it.
I'm not on this committee.
You can't, you got to say it.
All right, what do I?
2017, 18 superintendent goals as presented. I'm not on the committee.
We'd like to make a motion to accept the 2017, 2018 superintendent.
Goals.
Goals as.
As.
Presented.
Presented and or amended?
Yeah, we didn't amend it.
We didn't amend it.
Presented.
Thank you. Second, quickly. Thank you, Mark. All those in favor, let's get this one done. Thank you. Alita, thank you. You're appreciated, Kathy. Your leadership on that group is helpful. Actually, critical.
If I can just say, that's a great committee to work with. I really enjoy working there.
Of course it is.
It's good. Thank you, Brooke. That, that means a lot.
Three opinionated women on that committee. Okay, Policy Manager Susan, finally, right? Thank you.
So I, what level, I know it says 10 minutes, but what level of detail do you want me to go into in addition to the chart that's there?
I don't think, I think if there's.
Does anyone have any, moving forward, does anyone have any feedback on this format? Whoops, or, or?
I have to say, I love the chart. I just love it.
You just simplified the whole thing for us.
As long as you did this, I'm like, yeah, but I didn't.
Yeah, so B was pretty straightforward as far as sections went. You can see that there were, there were many that, there were no recommended changes or that we had matching policies.
I didn't have any. Did you guys? I had no questions. This made it so easy.
I love the chart. I love charts, period.
It's just easy to kind of quickly find what we need to look at. Any questions on any of it? So is there anything, Susan, that you want to draw our attention to?
Not that I can think of, no.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
It is not.
This section was.
Yeah, that was a good section.
There is, there is just one, there's one hold on B, I think it was just the one hold on BDG, the school attorney one.
Oh.
And what about, we could approve it in form with the exception of that policy tonight, if that's how you wanted to.
But what about the district agreement?
Well, wait a second here. We're going to do this first. Yeah, we're going to do this first. So I'm, I'm okay with that. Did everybody see BDG on the school attorney? And if you, and if you, assuming that you went through everything, you're probably good with it, unless. I don't have any issue with it. I mean, this is all best practices as MASCE. I'm, I'm fine with all of it. So what's the matter, Susan?
Me? Oh, nothing. You said so.
No, I think we're good to go.
So what's the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I was just trying to find BDG. So the second and third paragraphs need to, need to be reconciled. So I don't know if that might be something that I need to talk directly with Brooke about. A decision to seek legal advice or assistance on behalf of the school system will be made by the committee. The superintendent may also take such action at the direction of the committee. And then the third paragraph says, many types of legal assistance are routine, don't require specific committee approval, require notice. However, when the superintendent concludes, unusual types or amounts of professional legal service may be required, he or she will advise the committee and seek either initial or continuing authorization for such service. So I think there was a decision to hold it because we were trying to determine if that language should be tightened up or.
Well, you know what, this one, I'm actually glad you brought it up because this is confusing to me. Because a decision to seek legal advice or assistance on, this is kind of in conflict with some other documents I've seen. And I wonder if it was on, where was it? It was like bigger than our policies. So in order to seek legal advice, the committee, I don't think that's feasible because there are many, many, many times when it's confidential. So we wouldn't be bringing it to the full committee. And I always thought it was, you have, superintendent has things that she works with that I don't even know about, we shouldn't know about.
All the time. I mean, all the time.
Yeah. So there, in, within the note that's been deleted there, it says, in addition, it's important that a school committee establish guidelines for access to legal counsel by individual members. And in most cases, it's allowed, but with prior approval of the whole committee. So we could give authority for individual members to, you know.
Well, because I'll tell you right now, I'm contacting legal, not frequently, but when I need to.
Yeah, right. So I think that that wasn't necessarily the practice that we're following, so.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. Then you can't control the.
There are two qualitative things. The committee itself needs legal advice. And superintendent needs legal advice for her operations, which is somewhat independent of the committee or it's been delegated to her directly. And in that sense, I don't think the superintendent needs to refer, except to give us notice, if something is unusual.
Right.
I think maybe that's what we're struggling with here, that there is this area where we have delegated to the superintendent that sort of activity. Say like special education, routine, there's a connotation there.
I mean, it's a mask policy, so we could decide to just keep it.
Leave it as is. Because what you see in the black right now, Susan, is mask, right?
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, but I mean, if you look into the, this third paragraph that we're trying to reconcile here, you know, it's that many types of legal assistance are routine and do not require specific committee approval, and I think this spells it out pretty nicely, or prior notice, that Brooke has the option, because these are routine and part of the superintendent's job, and part of the business of the district that we don't need to know about, but if the superintendent concludes that there's going to be its unusual amounts, or it's going on for a really long, or it needs to come to our attention, then she would bring it to our attention.
Which is pretty much what we do right now, if you don't.
Right. So I'm okay with that language in the third paragraph. I said, so I'm okay with that language in the third paragraph, because I think it spells it out really nicely.
Oh, I had no issue with, I mean, I, you know, go do your thing.
Yeah, right?
Right? We don't really need to know unless we need to know, Kathy.
I don't think the last paragraph applies to the region, because it says, "School committee may use the services provided by the town council with three towns." So.
Yeah, I think so, unless the town of Beaumont wants us to use their town council.
Have at it, as long as you pay for it.
Yeah. Actually, we can't.
I knew it was.
Actually.
We're not legally allowed to, because I, you know, I know that, that was something I had looked into, because I liked the law firm that, not, not against Murphy Hesse, but I liked the law firm that you folks use, and they called me after and said, "No, we can't." So I.
Only in rare situations, for the most part.
So I think the point's well taken, Kathy.
All right, so are we good with this?
Well, we could strike that last.
Susan, what do you want us to do for you? Ma'am.
I will.
What, what?
Sorry.
No, you go ahead.
All right, well, I had emailed you about the district agreement.
Oh, that's coming at the next meeting.
But no, it's in here.
What?
There are references to it in, in B.
So.
I didn't know if it was appropriate or not, I didn't, because I don't know, I don't think that they're actually physically seeing the district agreement.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
The bylaws?
No, the district.
Oh, it's in that website, it's on our website.
I haven't looked it up, but it.
That district agreement, we need to, that thing is really old.
But is that, is that something that?
You're like, please don't get me wrong.
No, I mean, that's with, with the towns, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. No, 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 I mean, we're not going to talk about it right now, but it is something we should be, I'm going to put it on the ticker, sorry guys.
I would think you can reference it without, because if it's, if it's changed, if it's modified, if it's updated, it's still, the reference is valid, so.
Are there particular things?
Yeah.
Are there particular things you had in mind that you're concerned about in relation to it's citing the agreement?
I don't want to interrupt.
I thought that was about the, you had a question about the bylaws in the district agreement.
And it's under the school committee tab?
Yeah, I think the email was about the bylaws.
No, it's in B.
Oh, I mean, if you want to read the agreement.
Oh, okay.
It's under the school committee tab.
Thank you. I got the, I got it here, it's all moved out.
Okay, so we're kind of in a lull right here.
That's fine, you can, you move on.
Oh, BBA.
No, I want to know what it is we're trying to, I want to know what it is we're trying to resolve, so we can move forward or defer to another meeting.
BDA.
BBA.
BD.
BDA.
BBA, no, B, you said BBA.
School committee powers and duties?
It's boy, boy.
Oh, it was the legal reference.
Boy, dog.
The.
BDA.
The legal reference was added.
You had a question, the note above, can we, is there something you need to vote on? Will we be sending the ref, oh, in addition to.
Oh, you wondered if we should have a copy of the legal reference, is what you'd asked, not about the.
Bylaws?
Yeah. And, and I said that it's cited, that they're going to update, that the BBA that will be in the manual will be updated, an updated legal reference, and I did check with Dorothy, because I noticed that there were, we were doing the bylaw thing, there was some OML that was a little.
Yes.
And so she looked, and she said that that hadn't been updated yet, so that's all going to, all the references will be updated in the bylaws. And then the beauty of having mask host the manuals, that every time there's an update to MGL, it, there's the links, you know, the little, those will all get updated, too. Does that satisfy you enough to vote, or no?
No, it's fine, we won't.
Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
I have a question on BDFA, which is school councils. And so the question that I have with that is, at least at Florence Sore, I know that they're elected positions, and they are representing the school community, they are designated by MGL. So it seems to me, and maybe I'm wrong, but they should be keeping minutes of all of their.
Yeah, they should, and they're supposed to post.
Right, I know, but we had, going back two years ago, we had looked at that, and that wasn't necessarily what was being done in the schools. It may have changed, but I'm just saying, should there be something somewhere in there that, that, and maybe there is somewhere, that's, that's the question I kind of am asking. Is there anywhere right now that specifies or, or charges them with taking minutes and understanding that process?
It's a public meeting, I would think that you would have to take.
Well, you would think, but when we went, when I was on policy two years ago, this is one of the issues, when we went back and we started looking at school, school council, there were no minutes that were out there. Very little, I should say, I shouldn't say none.
So, you know, I'll do a quick check on that, to be honest with you, as I'm sitting here, I recall that this actually came up for discuss, some discussion, school councils, because we were talking about posting the meetings, remember, our last meeting? So I certainly can bring that back, and we were talking about the importance of continuum across the district. So I'll do a quick check on that.
I'm also going to go to the OML section, and talk about, like, are they, are they briefed in China? I know when I was in school council, we never talked about OML.
Yeah, right.
And they have open meeting law. And I believe they would be subject also to that.
Yes.
And they need to really understand what that is.
That's such a great point.
Really good point, yeah.
That is such a great point.
Because it didn't come up at all.
No, never, never mentioned.
But it's in the regs, if they have a brochure on it, on school councils, either DES, and it is part of that brochure on, you know, essentially how to run your school council. So. I'll do a check on both.
That was good.
Does that fall under the, the bylaws, like the, the subcommittee is under those rules where they have to?
It's not a subcommittee.
Yeah, okay, it doesn't fall.
Right, it's a, it's actually.
It's not an advisory, is, is this not in the bylaws?
No.
It's not, it does it, so.
It's a separate MGL designated.
Okay.
Okay, can I, good one, can I, on the school attorney thing, it sounds like we should remove the reference to the town council paragraph.
Yeah, that's, I took it away off, yeah.
All right. All right, Susan, what do you want us to do?
So, I guess we would have to, someone would have to move to approve it in form with the elimination of that one paragraph, then that one.
So if you can articulate it, and then someone can move it.
Okay, so the, the motion would be to approve section B of the district policy manual in form with the amended change of, well, striking the last paragraph of BDG. Policy BDG, do you need with the policies, or just the?
Okay. So.
Second. Whoa, that was a mouthful. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Policy, for all this crazy work, it's great, really, thank you. Okay, we do not have hold business, we're going to zoom through this. Budget more, any update this week?
No, I canceled the meeting for this week.
Okay. Personnel?
The Personnel Committee have completed the fourth draft of the school committee manual, and will be sending it out as material for the November 8 meeting, and we'll talk about that.
Okay. And Policy, clearly this is what you've been working on, anything else?
We started section I.
You did?
We did.
Wow.
And we also talked about the, the fact that mask does not have that policy, but the, so we're thinking it might land in section E somewhere, but that a lot of what Pat's been working on might be considered procedure, and the policy would be sort of.
Thin.
The beginning portion of that.
And that, that's fine, I just want, I want to be sure that we're complying.
Dorothy took, took some things with her that Pat provided.
Great.
And we'll meet again with her, but I'll be in touch.
That sounds great, thank you very much for doing that, I appreciate that.
And the high school facility advisory.
CPAC.
Oh, what?
CPAC.
Oh, I'm sorry, CPAC. I'm sorry, because you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I've got chilies.
Thanks, appreciate it. Actually, most of my report was said so much better, and with, you know, by Joan, because the last CPAC meeting, Joan gave the update on what's been happening in special ed, so that was really exciting, and I got to hear it two times, actually, because I love listening to her talk about her work, she's so clearly passionate about it. So the biggest thing that I want to pull out of all of those things, that she said it so much better, is the, the ongoing goals at every level, the desire to align programs across schools and across grade levels, that really impressed me when she was talking through those pieces, and just moving towards implementing systems and procedures that make more connections amongst programs, so there really is a through line of going. She also talked about the co-teaching math, at the time, she said, "I'll be at the next, hopefully at the next CPAC meeting to talk more about it with some of the teachers," and now that is scheduled. So November 16th, at seven o'clock at Luther Burbank, you'll get to hear, if you people would like to go, all about how the co-teaching math program is going.
So you're liking that CPAC group, huh?
Yeah, I do, I mean, it was, it's always fun to hear about what's happening in the schools and here, you know? So, yes, enjoyable.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
And Lynn, Facility Advisory Committee?
We met, our minutes are up to date, the draft is done, and hopefully, when we meet on October 30th, because we have a date, we will have a, we will put a presentation together for school committee.
You're okay? Thank you for that. All right, folks, any correspondence of note that you need to bring up? And if not, we're going to assume that the meeting minutes of October 11th, 2017, warrants of October 27th, 2017, are good to go.